Good morning, everybody, and welcome into the St. John's County Show that's on in the morning. Hope you're doing well today.
You're doing great.
I am doing great.
Good. Name it and claim it. Yes.
I make a living off of doing great. Troy?
Mm-hmm.
I'm turning the tables on this, man.
No one's gonna rain on his parade.
That's what I keep telling you. Every time you say that, I'm gonna take it as an actual compliment.
That's excellent. You do that.
This guy. Alright, uh, we're gonna talk about stuff today.
Okay.
We've got stuff today to talk about. Troy's literally on the horn trying to get answers to a story right now. Doing investigative journalism.
Live, on camera.
Live on? Well, he's not on camera just yet.
Okay.
But he is live doing it.
I am alive.
He's typing.
Yeah. It may not sound like it.
No. Sound dead, but I am alive.
Yeah.
Roadkill.
We will talk about, oh, some books came up at the latest school.
Oh, here we go.
Books.
Books. More books. Uh, we'll talk about construction, starting on the long-awaited Sebastian Inland Harbor project.
Okay.
This is right by our old studio. This is the one, right?
Yep.
Okay. Talk a little bit about that. Troy's always got insights on stuff like this.
He's working on it. Yep.
See if I can send you a picture.
Okay.
Oh, nice. Look at you. Wow. Good gracious.
You guys gotta tell me these things. I mean, I was here for show prep.
You were not.
No, I wasn't.
No. People can see that when the show started, you were literally just getting in. They could see that on camera.
They saw me walk.
They saw you walk in. Uh, Florida named the shark attack capital of the world.
Yeah.
We won!
Something to, yeah, about.
So exciting.
I guess it's more notable than the next award. St. Augustine up for most walkable city to visit.
What? Walkable city?
Yeah.
It's because you can't park anywhere.
Oh, I guess we didn't win that. I thought we won that already.
Oh, no, I think we're climbing the pop charts on that. It was a call to action. Hope you win. Love your hair.
Okay, so we'll talk about what that means. I have my own thoughts on what it means.
Okay.
So we'll get into that and more. A whole lot more. Right after I tell you about our friends at Bozard Ford Lincoln for... Since 1949. Long time. I don't remember what the math is on that. Bozard Ford Lincoln has been more than just a dealership. They are a family-owned beacon of trust right here in St. Augustine. They were founded on the principles of honesty, integrity, and community service. The Bozard family tradition continues to thrive through generations. We've got Letty coming on sometime soon, right?
Thursday afternoon show, yes.
Afternoon show. Awesome. They've got that state-of-the-art facility featuring 91 climate-controlled service space and a quick lane for no appointment needed maintenance. Plus, you can enjoy the comforts of their customer lounge. Beautiful place to just relax. And also pop over for a burger at Ford's Garage. They got some great burgers over there.
They have a nice selection, but a really, really special one.
That's right. They are proud recipients of the prestigious Triple Crown Award and named Florida's Dealer of the Year by Dealer Rater. Their team is dedicated to providing an enjoyable and efficient experience. At Bozard Ford Lincoln, they have the best in pricing, selection, and service, and your satisfaction is their mission, where they are driven to inspire. Also, the Florida Man Games. We've got a contest going on right now where you can win some free VIP tickets. All you gotta do is follow the quick, simple rules on our Instagram or our Facebook page, and you can take home some free tickets. You know, the early bird VIP tickets sold out very, very quickly. Record time. And so we've got, uh, we've got some more up for grabs for you.
This is a great opportunity for somebody out there.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah.
VIP is gonna be great. You're gonna get unlimited rides and attractions out there. You're gonna get, uh, your private bar. You're gonna get some free drinks. You're gonna, it's just a lot that's included in VIP. It's pretty awesome.
That is a great value, too.
Huge value.
Mm-hmm. This is exciting.
Yeah, man.
So Fridays, you're gonna make this big announcement, right?
Yes. We will announce the winners of the VIP tickets on Friday, so make sure you get to our Instagram, our Facebook page, and enter for your chance to win. We want to see you out there.
I hope I win.
I hope you do, too. I really do, for your voice's sake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I need to win.
You're not gonna win.
Hate to tell ya, staff know it. Not accepted.
No, it's just we have a rule that Troy's not allowed to win. I mean, anybody else in this room can win stuff.
Oh, great. Okay, so high five.
Yeah, we just have a rule that Troy can't win.
Okay, okay.
I've won too much in life already.
Oh, sure.
I get to hang out with you guys every day.
Life is a win.
There you go. Wow, there was, why did I sense sarcasm behind that a little bit?
What? It hurts when you, you know...
Doesn't accept my sincerity. Okay. Uh, Fidus Roofing also. Great Expectations Realty and Auction, Chiba Hut Toasted Sub, St. Augustine Pizza, BHF Insurance, Griffin Service, Elace Med Spa, Chris Lucero Bail Bonds, and BNS Signs, who we'll talk about here shortly. First, Troy, Davey, Clay, how you guys doing?
Doing great, and happy Wednesday.
Hump day. Here we are.
Yeah.
It's like this week's almost halfway over.
Yeah, that's true. It's only our second day.
It feels kinda strange, right? It does feel like a Tuesday day for me, but yeah.
Clay, how's it going behind the glass?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Nice.
Oh, yeah. So, Clay, did you get that picture?
Oh, you sent it to me?
I texted it to you.
Oh, I'll get it.
Oh, no, he needs email.
Oh, you need me to email?
I'll email it to myself.
Okay.
Question of the day, Troy. Alright, question of the day. Hottest food to bite into. There's several to choose from where you just like, no matter how long you wait, it's still not long enough, you know? Oh, like, like, burn the roof of your mouth hot? Yeah. Okay. Didn't you have options for that?
Well, the options were kinda like, I just threw some out there.
Oh, those were just examples?
Those were examples, like, apple pie from like McDonald's.
Oh, yeah, that is a true story.
Tostitos, like pizza rolls.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, don't keep going, because now I have nothing to say.
You know, so, there's, thanks along those lines.
I gotta go with one of your suggestions, which are Hot Pockets. No matter how long you wait, those things are nuclear.
I have to go with another suggestion. I mean, the apple pie from McDonald's. God, that's ridiculous hot.
Yeah, it really is crazy hot.
Yeah.
And then it, it's not, if it's not hot, then it's almost not edible.
Right.
Right, and it ruins the experience.
Like a hockey puck at that point.
Yeah, and there's a very short, yeah, transition window there of when it's edible and then when it's just junk.
Yeah, you gotta do like the mouth dance.
What do you think, Clay?
Uh, yeah, Hot Pockets, for sure.
Hot Pockets, yeah.
Hot Pocket!
So.
Ouch!
And I...
That should've been what followed. Hot Pocket! Ouch!
Yeah, and there, and there's so many to choose from, but I think the one that's gotten me the most is, uh, those jalapeno poppers.
Yeah, that's another hated one, yeah.
It's like, it just holds in that pepper, and then like, you're like, okay, I've waited six hours. It should be fine.
Nobody said Pop-Tart. Interesting, okay.
Okay, Pop-Tart's another pretty good one.
Yeah, I eat mine cold.
Yeah, you like yours cold?
Yeah.
Brown sugar cinnamon all the way.
Okay.
Man, I'm ready to ask that. Like, what's the go-to Pop-Tart?
Yeah.
Write that down for tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
There we go.
See if Mike Lewis erases it.
I'll put it in our actual script here. Notes. Notes, not script. Mike Lewis is a solid name. I was thinking about that when I saw Mike Lewis in the parking lot today. I was like, that's a solid name.
Well, he likes to be called Jerkface now. As of last night, he would prefer to be called Jerkface. Jerkface Lewis.
This.
Yeah, that's what he, he said it like 15 times last night, because Amanda called him a jerkface, yeah.
Okay.
That's Jerkface Lewis to you.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay. Alright, we'll move on from that.
Yeah.
No, there's a lot of good ones out there. Uh, deep-fried mushrooms. Deep-fried mushrooms?
Yeah, the juice just like, just hits ya.
Okay.
Actually, anything deep-fried'll get ya.
Okay.
Yeah, you could fry a shoe and I'd eat it.
Okay. I don't know about all that.
I love my deep fryer.
Yeah, it's fun.
It's now time for a quick check of the weather, Troy.
Hot.
That quick check of the weather brought to you by Great Expectations Realty and Auction. They can sell your home, your business, and everything in it. Check them out at geauction.com, ge realty.us. Perfect. Check of the weather.
You're welcome.
And our traffic report. We go to Clay for our traffic report this morning.
Is there a lookout on the roadways there?
Very clear today.
Pretty clear, yeah. There is a, here's a local look. There's a cop right there.
Okay.
Saw him on the way in.
Okay. Oh, where was that?
US One, right past the gates.
Oh, yeah, they hide out there sometimes.
Yeah, right behind, uh, the bar that got revamped.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, woo, can't tell the difference.
Yeah, they did a great job with that lighting show.
They painted a beam under lighting, and they turned the lights on.
Yeah. They made the sign work.
Yeah.
Minimal, minimal, minimal.
Beautiful. Alright, anyway.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
US One was terrible when I came in.
Why?
I don't know. At the end of my street, Lemon Street, coming out, taking a right, usually takes me like 20, 30 seconds, and I'm out. It was like three minutes.
Yeah.
Cars just never stop. Come.
Yeah, we had a US One cam. We don't.
Yeah, we need to slap something on that.
It was one of those situations, too, where like, it almost forces you to make a bad decision. Like, okay, I can make it on this one.
Right, yeah.
You're like, no, I shouldn't go. I'm just not gonna go.
Yeah. That can be a tough one to come out into, though.
Yeah.
Alright. Well, Lace Med Spa brings us that traffic report. We love Lace. You will, too, especially if you're looking for a relaxing and rejuvenating experience. At Lace, they specialize in providing their clients with a wide range of luxurious spa treatments and advanced medical aesthetic procedures, and they're always up in their game, getting new equipment, the latest and greatest. Pretty impressive out there. Whether you're looking to unwind with a hydro facial or enhance your natural beauty with Botox, dermal fillers, laser treatments, and a whole lot more, Lace is the place that will save your face.
Thank goodness.
The dream team on the beauty scene.
Yeah, that's it. Your ally in aesthetics.
There you go. Uh, lace.com. Did you ever figure out that investigative journalism you were doing before the show?
No, he hadn't texted back.
Oh, you don't even have the three dots?
I'll let you, I'll let you know, but I mean, I, I did send a picture to, uh...
For the other thing.
For the St. Sebastian thing.
What kind of picture are you sending?
We don't talk about that.
I know, we do not. We don't bring that up.
Ask that question, Davey. We don't even ask that question.
Not up, Troy.
Well, just make sure you hit the right one.
Alright. St. John's County School District votes to keep four controversial books, replaces a couple restrictions on them. Several popular books, they say, in the St. John's County, uh, school library system will face new restrictions following a heated book objection hearing on Tuesday. The St. John's County School District Board decided to limit access to a few books. Um, four books, I believe. Uh, Freedom Writer's Diary. Later Gator.
Yeah.
Those are, uh, spelled with eights.
That's a book with all about emojis and sort of having conversations, and some of it does get kind of explicit, to be honest with you, yes.
Yeah. Okay. A Stolen Life. And Slaughterhouse-Five.
I mean, I see nothing wrong with that one. I feel like Slaughterhouse should be, definitely. We have Upton Sinclair in the jungle with the, you know, the finger scene, so this should be fine.
Okay, I don't know any, I've obviously have not read any of these books.
Oh.
But I'm not checking into school libraries that often.
Right, I don't know like, who's reading, who is reading.
Probably would. Probably would these days, yeah.
I'm media.
Uh, I guess Slaughterhouse-Five is by Kurt Vonnegut. Uh, semi-autobiographic novel detailing a pilgrim's capture in World War II.
Slaughterhouse-Five.
I know, it really sounds like a movie that I wouldn't have been allowed to watch when I was a kid.
Yeah, maybe a name change there.
Movie.
Maybe a rebrand on that.
I feel like it's a Rambo spinoff or something. Later Gator.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's the emoji one.
Yeah, this one I kinda agree with on this one. It's, it does get kinda graphic, yeah.
Okay. Uh, that's by Harry N. Abrams.
Harry.
Harry.
Young adult series written entirely as instant messages, as Davey said. A Stolen Life by Jace Dougrem. Dougredem?
Dougrem.
Dougredem.
Yeah.
Very German.
That is, yeah.
A personal memoir of one girl's nightmare at the hands of kidnappers.
Well, that's a little, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds dark, but...
It does sound dark. Sounds like Taken, that movie with, yeah, Liam Neeson.
And a Freedom Writer's...
Set of skills.
Oh, Freedom Writers?
Freedom Writer's Diary, uh, by the Freedom Writers. It's a collection of journal entries from high school students, whoever came adversity through education, they say. Um, you know, and again, I haven't read any of these books. I don't know what's in these books. I can't tell you if this is a good call, bad call. I don't know. I'm just telling you kinda what happened. Board members expressed concerns over the mature content of these books. While some community members voiced frustration over what they see as censorship, uh, some parents were arguing that students, uh, should have access to these books. Kelly Barrera's board member, longtime board member, emphasized the need for caution regarding the mature content available to students. Not opposed to that. Um, books can be objected to if they're deemed pornographic, describe sexual conduct, are not suited to student needs, or are inappropriate for the grade level. Uh, currently, there are about 100 books with objections in the district. Superintendent Tim Forsen, uh, warned that continuous restrictions could eventually make books inaccessible, I mean, in schools. They're not, you can still get them outside of school.
Right, yeah, some are, even in St. John's County Public Library, just because it's the audience that they're, these books are accessed to.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, if you're upset that a book is not available in, in a school, and you really want your child to read it, you can always go to the library and get it. Yeah, I mean, you can go buy it.
Go buy it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why we're putting so much emphasis on, you know, we need to have these books in a school. I mean, the books are available everywhere.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we, we gotta walk that line. I mean, there's a line somewhere, and we've discussed this, and we're not gonna go into this at length at this very moment, but...
Yeah.
There's adult-themed stuff. I mean, there is a line of, we shouldn't have hustlers in school, right? So where's the line between...
Wait, wait, wait.
Educational and...
Troy, he was on a roll there.
We thought Troy was a good person until that moment.
All of a sudden, no.
This is why we don't talk about this, because...
It's all about getting the joke.
He never learned to read. There's the answer.
I mean, there is a line between adult content and school content.
True, yeah.
And again, you know...
And they have a responsibility to keep kids safe.
Yeah, and people...
And the school district actually has elementary school criteria, the middle school criteria, and they have a high school criteria, and, you know, it's...
And it's different for each of those age groups, as it should be.
What I like about this story is that it wasn't such a knee-jerk reaction to, quote, "Just ban books right away." They're obviously flagging 100. They're having discussions and roundtables behind the scenes about this. Is, is it appropriate? Is it fair to all concerned? Throw the five-way test in there. I'm just saying, I, I think that they're doing a responsible job in, in stewarding the safety of our kids and making sure that they grow, you know, in a normal environment, as opposed to being stimulated by everything in their, in front of them, and I think that's probably the, part of the communication issue that we have with kids these days.
Yeah.
Is it a five-way test now?
Yes, there's a, there's an added one, I believe, yes.
They added a fifth one?
Yes, sir, I can send it to you.
I'm the worst rotarian ever. When did that happen?
I think about two years ago.
Okay, okay, then I don't feel that bad. Now, they did limit these to 11th and 12th graders only, so again, these are still available.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, well, let's see. I guess Freedom Writer's Diary, Later Gator, and A Stolen Life, and Slaughterhouse-Five, 11th and 12th graders only. Additionally, Freedom Writer's Diary and Later Gator will now be, if kids younger than that wanna read it, their parents have to sign off on it.
Oh, okay.
They're still available.
Okay, see, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I, I don't see, I don't see what the problem is.
I don't know either. People, I know they're gonna come for me on that one, but I'm just saying, I think it's a fair...
No, I, I, I mean, if the parents can sign off and they still have it available, then I'm good with it.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I agree with what Davey said. I mean, there's no reason to put something in front of kids. I mean, again, you can go and just, if you want a book that's not available in, in your school, take a trip to the public library. It's good to go to the library anyway.
Hundred percent.
Says Davey.
They are, they're wonderful. They are. You can even get your own seeds. They have a seed library, too.
That's right.
I'm just kinda having in my mind, like, uh, the old video where like, the bad videos were in the room in the back. Do they have this situation here, like, oh, wait, wait?
Right.
You're not allowed past this door.
They gotta go through the beaded door to get some of your...
It's almost like, yeah, like the adult section of this. That is funny, actually.
Yeah, so that, that vision went through my head when they said, it's only for 11 and 12-year-olds. I was like, oh.
11th and 12th graders.
Sorry, sorry. Is it me? Is the air conditioner working in here? It's a little warm.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'm wearing a flannel, so...
It might be your hormones.
You are wearing a full prospector here today.
Troy is finally...
Jeans and a hat indoors in what's essentially summertime.
Yeah, my weather report, it's hot, and then I'm wearing a flannel.
Finally going through La Cambia de Vida.
Yeah.
Change of life.
Uh, okay, so... Yeah, there you go. Um, that happened.
Yay, books!
Yay!
Alright, I mean, books. Thanks for helping us, guys. Yeah, great.
Uh, alright. Construction starting on a long-awaited Sebastian Inland Harbor project in St. Augustine.
Oh, here we go.
This is the big, what's going to be a hotel, I believe, correct, Troy?
Yes.
This is gonna be a hotel right next to the cigar factory where our first studio was.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, look at that. There's the concept. Holy crap, that looks very futuristic.
Yeah, it's, it's an AC, uh, hotel.
Okay.
What does that mean, Atlantic City? I don't know what that means.
It's a Marriott product.
Oh, is it?
It's a, uh, it's a good-sized hotel. There's another, there's another one coming there, too.
Is this one of Conti's hotels?
No, this one is Abbas.
Abbas.
He's the one that went through the trouble with the city. He tried to rezone and do some stuff. The, and I don't know if you remember this argument. I was like, eh, they really shouldn't vote this down. It's gonna be bad. He went to court. He won. You know, because he was actually trying to downsize the density, and the city said no.
So, okay.
And then he ended up winning in court, and, uh, so they, they kinda raked him over the coals a little bit, so it's, it's moving along pretty good, is what it seems like. I was there yesterday.
Okay.
Uh, at the cigar building, looking at, looking at what they had.
Okay, alright, that'll be something.
It's very...
Looks like a hospital.
Yeah, institutionally, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, ours would be prettier.
I'm saying. Now, is it a thing?
The cigar, cigar building will probably start like, middle of next year, early part of next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that'll be a little more of a boutique.
It's a boutique. It's a tapestry by Hilton.
Okay.
Oh. Is it a thing to like, when these things get approved, to like, hold the aesthetic of some sort of like historic look, or like, you know what I mean, or is that, they're just the...
There's a battle that goes between, uh, the brand, so in this case Marriott, and, you know, because they want everything to look the same, so they want it to be modeled, and, and we, at our company, we don't want everything to look the same. So in St. Augustine, we're all...
You're selling a different experience at each one.
We're selling like, so like, our Hilton Garden Inn looks nothing like any other Hilton Garden Inn you'll ever run into. Um, you know, we've got a spring hill that starts, uh, shortly, too, uh, right near the library, because we heard the carousel was coming.
Oh, my God. But it's not gonna be an attraction, it's gonna be a deterrent, so I hope you know that. I hope you know it's gonna be a deterrent.
Complaints from your guests.
People are gonna say, I was gonna book that, but there's an antiquated ride next to it. It makes me think the hotel's antiquated.
What did I say?
Yeah.
But we'll have a spring hill right there on that corner, and it'll look, it'll look, you know, we try and do things, uh, a level above what the, uh, uh, what the brand is actually asking for, so we don't, we don't wanna put a box in.
To make it unique.
Yeah, and then Mr. Patel's really, I mean, it costs him extra to do it, but it, it really, I think it makes a difference for the city.
I hundred percent agree with that, yeah. Just looks like it belongs in our city.
Yeah. Yeah. So, let's see. It's been 20 years, they say, of planning with little action. It's really been 20 years? 20 years they've been trying to do this?
Well, it was gonna be a Westin originally, and, um, you know, the original developer got caught up in, uh, a bank thing where, uh, Wells Fargo bought out, uh... With Covey with the First Union or one of those.
Yeah.
And it got bought out, and his, his note got called, so he couldn't build it. I mean, he was pretty much locked in. His, his money went away when the buyout took place, and so he, he got caught up in that recession and stuff like that, and, you know, uh, you know, it's been, it's been going back and forth, and then Wells Fargo ended up taking it back, and, uh, you know, a boss and his family, uh, purchased it, but they've been going back and forth as far as design scale.
Crazy. How long this takes.
Yeah, congratulations on that family getting, getting it moving, so, because it's been, it has been a long time. They, they've been involved probably for the last 10 or 15.
Okay.
They have nice pillows.
Well, it's Marriott.
Yeah, so it should be pretty decent.
Yeah, I'm, I'm either a Marriott or a Hilton person, usually.
Okay, okay.
Um, let's see. I'm trying to think, I'm trying to see something in here that we haven't covered. I mean, we've pretty much covered it. It's a 139, 139 hotel room, I would imagine, so... 139-room hotel valued at 20 million bucks. Hotel's part of the extensive plans developers have proposed over the next 13 year, uh, for the 13-acre site, I'm sorry. I was like, we can't drag this on for the 13 years.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, which have also included condos, retail space, restaurants, and a parking garage.
Condos?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
And I like that they're at least gonna, you know, provide their own parking and a parking garage.
And some retail spots. That might be nice, okay.
Yeah, and Betty says I'll, I'll never get out, uh, on Riberya with the, with the hotels, and that's not necessarily true, because hotels actually, uh, when they're close to town, people park and stay. So, it's not like if, if that was a shopping center, it would be, it would be a real issue.
Yeah.
Um, but people park and stay.
Right.
Um, in, in hotels, and, uh, it actually helps, uh, our visitor experience instead of somebody who's coming in, a day visitor from Jacksonville, who's doing laps around the, uh, the city.
Yeah, get those steps in.
Yep. Hop on an Old Town Trolley.
Yes, no, it'll be right there. There's trolley stops throughout the entire thing, right there, the distillery and every place else.
That's key.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So, it is gonna get moving out there. That's the short of the story.
Okay.
Even though we just made it long, that's the short of the story. Uh, you know, it's an interesting design. It's an interesting design, I can say that, but, uh, yeah, it seems like it's not a bad thing.
Looks safe.
I'm not mad at it.
It's, the wind blows, you know you're in the right building.
I think the other one that's supposed to come in is a Hard Rock Hotel.
Really?
But I don't know if that's a hundred percent confirmed yet, but I just threw a rumor out there, so...
Yes, you did.
Good luck, Abbas. We'll find out after the show if he's watching.
Wow, alright, we're changing the title to St. Augustine Getting Hard Rock Hotel? Question mark. Gotta put a question mark on that one.
That would be cool, though.
Yeah.
Wow, we should send them something to frame. They always collect the, like, memorabilia, right? I guess it's gonna have to be rock and roll stuff, but...
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll send them these pictures of us for the Florida Man Games.
Perfect, yeah.
You can hang those on the wall of the Hard Rock Hotel for no good reason.
Right.
Okay, Gas By the Gas Report time. Let's see if the link works this morning. Um, let us know where you are seeing the best prices for gas. It's all just taking me to Canva. That's very interesting. Let us know where you're seeing the best prices for gas. I'll manually type it in, so we've got it in front of us. Something I should do in, uh, the show prep that I show up for. Uh, let's see. Uh, okay, there it is. We've got the Sunoco at $21.99, North Ponds at $3.29. Apparently, that's their cash price. Owens at seven eighty South Ponds, we're reporting at three thirty-four. We've got the Mobile in Circle K on eight hundred South Ponds, reporting at three thirty-four as well. Uh same with the Shell at two sixteen Ponce Leon Boulevard and the Shell at one forty-six King Street. All of these have not been updated since a day ago, except for the Gate on Mizel Road, which was updated fifty-three minutes ago at a depressing three forty-nine.
Oh.
Well.
But at least they updated.
At least they updated.
At least they were tried and true, yeah, honest.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Uh we also appreciate the fact that if uh any of us go to jail, Chris Lucero is gonna get us right out. We're not going to jail anytime soon.
No, no, no.
Let's hope.
Nope.
Um but maybe you or someone you love is rotting away in jail at this very moment. Uh Chris Lucero, we'll get him out. Nine oh four eight two two bail, that's nine oh four eight two 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 four five. We got some live music happening today as well and tonight. Jim Lamb at the Milltop Tavern at noon. We got Smoking Joe Shower at Trade Winds at one o'clock, Chase Foraker at Pierre's Pub, one o'clock. Uh Reggie Starett at the Milltop Tavern at four thirty, Vinnie Jacobs at the Guy Harvey Resort at five, David Watt Besley at Hurricane Grill and Wings at five. Our favorite serial killer, Gary Douglas Campbell. He's killing them softly with his words.
Oh, very nice.
OC White's at five thirty.
You should have a cover of that.
You should.
Yeah.
Really should, with a killer name.
Yeah, right?
Josh Ford is at DJ's Clam Shack at six, Jolie Cortes's at six, Lonesome Burt's Thick and Thin String Band.
Hmm.
Old Coast Dales at six, and then Vegas Gray, Pierre's Pub, six o'clock. That of course comes to us from Griffin Services, where your home's comfort is their top priority. They specialize in AC, plumbing, and electrical services, plus unique offerings like standby generators, water softeners, and they do gas work as well. You'll always experience fast, friendly, and affordable service seven days a week. Give them a call, nine oh four five hundred twenty-six fifty-three, or visit griffenservice.com. Yeah. Alright, we've got a Y Wednesday.
Why?
Why? Lot, well, that's exactly what you're gonna be asking after this. Give me a second here.
Why?
Tony?
She's jumping on him.
There's an Ohio billionaire that wants to do another submarine to the Titanic. Remember how the last time we tried to do a the deep dive in a submarine?
It was a bad thing.
It's a very bad thing.
Yeah.
I mean, the worst thing that could possibly go wrong, went wrong.
Geez.
Then like a bunch of rich people didn't make it. Why?
Neither did not.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I guess he's trying to prove it can be done. We'll talk about it right after I tell you about Fidas Roofing. I know that your roof can be done in spectacular fashion. Uh look, man, I see a lot of people, not a lot of people, but I see my fair share of people who just grab some fly-by-night guy, some guy who knocks on their door, that doesn't have any, doesn't even have a logo on his truck.
Terrible.
Beat up nineteen ninety-five Ford F-two fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Does the roof and the roof looks fine until a storm comes by and then their roof is absolutely ruined. They're out thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars when they could have just as easily trusted a, well, a trusted roofing company like Fidas. A lot of times if you need work done, by the way, on your roof, your insurance company is gonna pay for it or pay for a very large chunk of it. So make sure your roof does not have damage. The best way to do that is to call them out there for a free roof inspection. It's easy. And if there's nothing wrong with your roof, they're gonna hop down and say, there's nothing wrong with your roof. You don't have to spend any money on anything for another X amount of years. Uh trust the company that the locals trust. It's Fidas Roofing, nine oh four three five five roof.
They do pavers and gutters, yeah.
It's back. He at least tried.
It was strong.
Definitely. It was not strong, it was soft, though, yeah.
Mustard what you could muster, sir, and that's all we ask for.
Shut down.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now he's Elvis, now he's going into the Elvis. He's like, I gotta take advantage of this deep voice while I got it.
Karate Elvis, though.
Karate Elvis.
I mean, I have been stacking on the weight, so hey. God bless you.
All those peanut butter and banana sandwiches.
Fried peanut butter and banana.
There you go.
They're really good.
I mean, I guess it's not that bad for you. That peanut butter is just gonna thicken you up.
Yeah.
Marcella.
Yeah, well, and the breads.
Yeah, the bread, the bread. Larry Connor, he's an Ohio billionaire. Maybe not for long, Larry. Plans to take a twenty million dollar submarine to the Titanic site to prove the industry is safer after the Ocean Gate implosion. Do you remember from a few years ago?
Do you remember, guys?
Uh he's preparing to take a deep sea submersible into the Titanic wreck to demonstrate improved safety in the wake of last year's Ocean Gate disaster. He's a real estate investor. And uh he is the Triton Submarines co-founder.
Okay.
Larry, Rose's Stone really wasn't real, it was a movie.
The heart of the ocean, yeah.
And there was plenty of room for Jack on that door.
Yes, there was, damn it. Can we talk about that? No, we're not talking about that right now.
Is this guy single? Does he have any living relatives? Cause I'm ready to get hitched.
You're ready to get in that will?
Let's go.
At least get the insurance.
Hey daddy.
He's so Larry is the real estate investor. Uh Triton Submarines co-founder Patrick Leahy is the Triton Submarines co-founder, and they plan to send over twelve thousand four hundred feet to the site in a new two-person submersible. Connor and Leahy aim to show that such voyages can be safe and life-changing if done correctly. Why don't you just watch it on drone video?
That's all. What do you need? You're not even touching the fish.
It's not that life-changing.
So dopey.
Leahy's twenty million dollar Triton four thousand two.
Okay, come up with a better name. I'm tired of all these Triton and uh yeah, come up with something, Dolphin One.
That just doesn't sound aggressive enough.
I know, right? It's kind of like bite out of the ocean or something.
It'll nuzzle ya. Um. It's designed with the latest technology. Okay.
Okay.
It doesn't make you feel any better.
I know, right? I hope so.
It's designed with thirty-year-old technology.
Get somebody from NASA to look at it or something. I mean, like, let's talk to those people.
They've had some failures too.
They can even get back to the moon.
Oh my goodness.
We barely lost the plans on how to go to the moon.
Then let's just not do adventures anymore, guys. Let's just pack it up. Let's go fishing.
They wanted to make sure the Russians didn't get it.
Oh, well.
No, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. The initiative follows the tragic implosion of the Titan submersible in June, uh which killed five people, including Ocean Gate CEO Stockton Rush. Criticism of Ocean Gate's safety procedures, including its failure to certify the Titan with recognized safety organizations spurred Connor to push for a safer submersible. He didn't specify the voyage date, but the mission seeks to restore confidence in deep sea exploration. Yeesh, good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Good luck, buddy. Cause that thing just crimpled, crumpled like a can.
Oh.
When it got.
Within seconds.
Yeah, I mean, almost instantaneously when it got to a certain point, just, yeah. Alright, Florida named the shark attack capital of the world.
Wow.
That's fun.
Sharks are visiting here, too.
Let's send the tourists, more tourists to the beach.
This is what we tell the tourists.
Well, they are at the beach, yeah, good.
Yeah, uh yeah.
Yet they still.
Deeper in the water.
Yet they still come.
I'm just kidding. I'm just making a joke. Florida, particularly Volusia County.
Oh.
Is known as the shark attack capital of the world.
So why would you swim there? Like, people know, why would you swim there?
Good surf.
Is it really?
Good surf, people like an adrenaline rush.
Near the jetties and New Smyrna, it's it's a, it's pretty, pretty prevalent.
Wow.
Florida Museum of Natural History's International Shark Attack File.
Geez, dot com.
Yeah. Reports that Volusia County has recorded the highest number of unprovoked shark attacks globally with three hundred and fifty-one in it since eighteen eighty-two.
Oh, you deserve that one, right?
You can't get me.
Well, you know, it wouldn't be surprising if there's a new TikTok challenge out there somewhere.
Right?
You know, provoke a shark.
New Smyrna Beach.
Shark in the eye or something like that.
I'm now picturing the kid from League of Their Own.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That kid.
What was his name? Hudson?
Just out there in the middle of the ocean provoking a shark.
Angel.
Still will.
That's it. They say unprovoked shark bites occur when uh a shark bites a human without any provocation in its natural habitat. Yeah, that would make sense.
He's really upset about this, okay?
Are you okay in there?
She's going through a hard time about the shark.
I thought we had a.
Be strong.
I thought we had another guy wandering or something.
Oh, no.
Balloon or something.
Yeah. Got allergies.
Yeah. The majority of.
Allergic to sharks.
He's just allergic to people talking about sharks.
Sharks, yeah.
The majority of these attacks happen in September, followed closely by July, August, and October. In twenty twenty-three, the US saw thirty-six confirmed unprovoked shark attacks, down from forty-one in twenty twenty-two. I do wanna know what the stat is on provoked shark attacks.
I know, what's, what's the provoke part?
I know. How do we provoke sharks? Florida led with sixteen bites, followed by Hawaii. They had eight bites in New York. New York had four shark bites.
Yeah, they don't really like it up there. Those were lone sharks.
Yeah, they were just rogue.
Lone sharks.
Now I got it.
I know, at first I thought he meant like singular.
Yeah.
Then I'm like, oh, lone sharks, yeah. Most victims were engaged in surfing or board sports.
Okay.
Which cured uh forty-two, accounted for forty-two percent of the attacks, followed by swimming or wading at thirty-nine percent and snorkeling or freediving at thirteen percent.
Nothing with pickleball.
Sport's gonna get away with everything.
That's what happened in New York.
I know.
Land shark.
To reduce the risk of shark attacks, the Florida Museum of Natural History recommends the following.
Stay out of the water.
Great rule.
I mean, that's the number, I mean, we could have just said that.
Find a pool.
Right, got a damn pool.
God sakes, great job.
I don't like this first one, as a matter of fact, swim with a buddy.
Why, so you can both get bit by a shark?
Right, no.
You just have to swim faster than your buddy.
I guess it's the same theory as a bear, right? Geez.
So they can film it, I mean, like.
Right. Stay close to shore, okay?
Alright.
It's valid.
Okay.
Or onshore.
True. Avoid swimming at dusk or dawn. Yeah, I didn't realize, but sharks are a lot more active and a lot closer to the shore at night.
Oh.
Yeah. Steering clear of areas with schools of fish or active fishing, that makes sense. But I mean, it's hard to tell sometimes when you're just like in the area of where schools like to be. Not wearing shiny jewelry, yeah, cause a shark could mistake that for fish scales.
Sorry.
Well, you shouldn't wear that in the ocean anyway. If you lose it, it's gone forever.
True. The heart of the ocean, we learned about that.
That's right.
I thought that was for barracudas.
Barracuda.
Great song, Pete.
Minimizing excessive splashing.
Don't splash when you get in there, just, oh, this is, that doesn't sound like.
Excessive splashing. Excessive.
Okay.
I still agree with, I think Troy's got the best way to avoid a shark bite.
Stay out of the water.
Be in the water.
Just don't do it.
If you really don't wanna get bit by a shark, the absolute one hundred percent way to do that is not going into the ocean.
Wasn't there a bracelet that we all bought in the nineties that was like this big thick braided thing that was like deter sharks or whatever? It's like something like that.
Oh, somebody sold you a scam.
I think so. Yeah, I think so.
He's still got a shark attack.
He did, a baby, right?
Yeah, attached to his suit.
Oh. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, man. I mean, it wasn't the biggest shark in the world. Mike likes to definitely exaggerate the size of the shark. I mean, it was, I don't even know if it was a shark. It was like that big.
It was a spinner.
It was a pup.
No, I really don't know how big it was. Alright, our final story today, St. Augustine is up for the most walkable city to visit award in the United States.
So cool.
Cause nobody can drive there. I mean, it's the only option. You can't do anything but walk in the city of St. Augustine. I mean, what is the, what is the? This is easy. I mean, we should easily take home the title of most walkable city. And we are in competition, apparently, with other cities that I guess you can't drive in. Now, the city is one of twenty contenders chosen by travel experts for their walkability. Featuring numerous attractions, eateries, and accommodations. Connected by pedestrian-friendly streets. Get behind the wheel of some of those cars, you're not gonna hear it's very pedestrian-friendly. People don't like pedestrians in downtown St. Augustine. If they could run them over, they would. St. Augustine is one of three Florida cities in the running alongside Key West and West Palm Beach. Give it to one of those.
Oh, wow. West Palm Beach?
I guess so.
Key West, I get. West Palm Beach?
West Palm, well, their sidewalks are nice.
Yeah, that's only like one strip.
Yeah, there's one strip, yeah.
It's only one strip, no, West Palm Beach. Key West, I get.
Well, I mean, downtown St. Augustine, we've only got like four blocks. It's only four blocks you people really wanna hang out at?
What uh, yeah, where, where do you walk? I mean, I guess, where are they judging the walk area? Is it like Apollo?
I'm assuming in the historic district.
Okay.
They like St. Augustine for its European feel, easy-to-reach neighborhoods, and popular trolley transportation.
Oh.
Again, shout out Old Town Trolley.
That's nice.
Readers can vote once daily until Monday. Don't, don't, stop voting.
Yeah, if you have that kinda time, you're doing the wrong things in life.
Go, go vote for West Palm Beach.
Yeah.
Um until Monday, June seventeenth, at noon Eastern Time. The winners will be announced on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. We'll probably win that.
June twenty-sixth, sounds like an important day.
Yeah, we're probably gonna win.
Is it an important day?
It's gonna be the day that we got crowned a walkable city.
I think that's a very important day.
Is that your birthday or something?
No.
Yes, it is.
Okay, alright.
So there it is, the walking man gets the walkable city.
There you go, right on your birthday.
That'll be exciting.
Be your reward.
That'd be my present from you guys.
Your present from USA Today.
The official walker, St. Augustine.
They really should interview you for that.
With a golden walker.
Yeah. The wa, we've interviewed the walking man about the most walkable town.
Jessica, are you listening?
I get interviewed for so many stuff.
Yeah. Wow, I never thought I'd hear the day where Troy complained about being on camera.
Too much.
Complained about being interviewed too much.
Bill, last, last night, people were like, um, what are you, what are you gonna be interviewed this week for?
I know, yeah.
I bet.
Yeah.
It's gotta be hard because you have so many different brands and you have to separate to make sure that you're a beacon for each brand.
I mean, you're basically the unofficial mayor of St. Augustine. I mean, let's be honest.
I love that language.
People, I mean, they really do. If they come to St. Augustine to do a story, they check in with you. They really do.
Right, before the mayor.
You're the, they do check in with you more than they check in with the actual mayor. I mean, this is true.
Tell us about the history of Cordova.
If you wanna know.
He can tell you, he's the mayor.
I know, God bless.
Really is the mayor.
True.
The unelected mayor for the rest of his life, I think. As long as he lives in the city.
So what is it? The guy's name's Sloppy Joe uh down in Key West. He actually became mayor. He was like the bar owner and he got mad and he became mayor.
Oh, that is a story, yeah.
You could have done that.
Not too late.
Troy could get the signatures like that.
I know.
He could.
He could.
Just has to do a news story about it. So he's just gonna come down here and interview.
I need signatures.
Right.
Mike Lewis wants to help you.
Like, Lewis will help. I'll help you. Uh to vote for St. Augustine in any other city besides St. Augustine.
Just Google the article.
You can go to, no, I like, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but I like reading out the entire web address now.
Yeah, we all love this, yeah.
You know, it's just a thing I like doing.
Such a horrible job with them.
Right, it's just so unmemorable. You can visit tenbest.usatoday.com/award/travel/most-walkable-city-two-visit slash.
Who released this?
USA Today.
Yeah.
Gosh.
I know, I said it a million times. It's so unmemorable.
I tried to type it as fast as you said it, but it didn't work out.
You gotta be a stenographer for that.
Yeah, or Blake, he could do it.
Yeah. Alright, so there you go, that's what we got for today. What do you got for comments, Troy? How do you wanna go those, that route?
On this Wednesday, I'm gonna walk through the wacky world of wondrous and wise witticisms of the watchers.
Okay, while you do that, I'll check in with Bates, Uden Floyd and let you know they're not your average local insurance agency. They provide peace of mind and insurance to protect your biggest investments. They've got an approach to insurance and risk longevity in our community and the way they treat their clients that sets them apart from all the rest. They offer homeowners, auto, commercial, and benefits and they've been doing that for over fifty years. It's a very long time. Kristi Lawrence is St. Augustine's premier agent and she offers complimentary policy reviews and has a deep understanding of insurance and what is needed in St. Augustine to be properly insured. I mean, she really takes this stuff seriously. She's been doing it for so long.
Seventeen years?
Yeah, seventeen years. She goes to all these conferences. I mean, she knows what is coming up in the world of insurance. She came by the afternoon show yesterday. That was great. We got some great information on, on what to expect for hurricane season and what might be coming down the pipeline for us.
And what was on the local news this morning was the exact thing that she told us yesterday before everybody else. So just saying, she's breaking the news to us.
Yeah. Well, you know, a lot of times the local news folks watch us.
Oh, that's nice. Alright.
And we thank you. We're glad you're here. We're sorry we make fun of you all the time.
That's okay, they need to know that.
We don't make fun of you personally.
That's how we should love.
That's right, that's right. Thanks for kinda helping me dig out of that one. Thanks for kind of helping me dig out of that one.
Gotcha.
Give them a call. 904-794-5455. We're making an appointment. Also our friends at BNS Signs. If you own a business, you got an event coming up, or if you just need some business cards or stickers or things like that, there's no one better to go to in town than BNS Signs. We absolutely love them. They do all the work for the 904 now. They do all the work for the Florida man games and I wouldn't have it any other way. They're absolutely the best. Uh, we can all personally vouch for BNS Signs and their great work here in this studio. Stop by their website, bnssigns.com. Or you can drop by in person, South Collins Avenue, just off State Road 16. Great shop back there. You'll see them making everything from ginormous LED lit signs to maybe some banners. You know, they do it all, man. They do it all. No job is too big or small for BNS Signs. All right. What you got, Troy?